We all set? Okay, we will call this meeting to order. Just one housekeeping before we begin with the invocation. For those of us on the dais, I've been asked to inform everyone that we do need to push the green, push the button so that it appears green before we speak in order to pick up, in order to pick up our voices. And after you finish speaking, please depress the button so it no longer goes green to avoid crosstalk. So with those instructions, did I do that correctly? All right. Let's, we'll call the meeting to order and we will begin with the invocation from Vice Mayor Carroll.
We are thankful for this town and its residents. We are grateful for all who work for the betterment of our community and all who serve on its behalf. That those who work here and those who serve here be ever mindful of the town's vision and mission statement. Grant this council the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interest in issues of our times, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, personal peace in our lives, and join our task. Amen.
Amen.
Mayor Foley?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carroll?
Here.
Councilmember Alwater?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Altieri?
Here.
Let the record show all members are present.
Thank you. Item number two, are there any requests to reorder the agenda, any requests for deletions or emergency additions? If there are none, can we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
For a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? No, it is unanimous. Item, item three, we have a presentation and a proclamation for the Florida Alliance to end human trafficking. We have some representatives here. If you'd like to come up to the podium and please introduce ourselves, and I understand you have a brief presentation, is that correct? Okay, great, thank you.
Good morning. I want to thank you for helping our community become aware of the fastest growing crime in the world today, child sex trafficking. We are here today because we are in a crisis and we believe that addressing the crisis of human trafficking through awareness and action alongside our government leaders is one of the keys to end this travesty. Since the pandemic, child trafficking has become the fastest growing crime in the world. America is now the number one buyer of sex and Florida is number three in the nation for hotline calls. The buying and selling of humans is a multi-billion dollar global market. Sex trafficking is in every state and every community and this horror is happening right here in our county. Social media has opened the door for predators and traffickers to bait and groom a child so they will come to them willingly. Sexting and sextortion is now the fastest growing gateway to child trafficking. According to Homeland Security, many recruiters the same age as our children are being used to start these sexting rings. In the Treasure Coast, four teachers have been arrested over the past year for sexting with students. Florida Faith Alliance has created powerful anti-trafficking videos called "Don't Take the Bait," and these are for middle and high school students with a focus on educating them and their teachers. We will be working with school boards to get these videos into every school. We are at a crisis. It is crucial to bring awareness, to protect every child, and equip every parent, grandparent, teacher, and every citizen. Florida Faith Alliance is committed to bring that awareness with presenter teams trained to go into churches, synagogues, schools, businesses, and organizations with community presentations. We believe that anti-trafficking campaign can be launched in our community and multiplied to other communities through increased awareness by postings on social media, published material, and awareness presentations. Together, we can do this. We can cross party lines, racial lines, and cultural lines. Now is the time. Proverbs 31:8 tells us, "Speak up for those who cannot speak for themselves; ensure justice for those being crushed." We want to empower you as community leaders to take a leading role in ending this travesty. Our call to action to our council members and every member of Indian River County and the four counties of the Treasure and Gold Coast is to support and attend our free awareness presentation next Tuesday, January 30th, at 7:00 PM, right here at the Indian River Shores Community Center. Together, we can unite to fight and send a loud and clear message, not on our watch. Thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. We do have a proclamation for you, but I understand that the Board of County Commissioners has already issued a proclamation as have other municipalities, and so on behalf of the town council, we are delighted to join in supporting your effort.
Yes, thank you.
So our proclamation, I'll spare you, there are a bunch of whereas clauses, but the meat of it is really in the, in the resolution, which is now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Indian River Shores calls upon the residents of Indian River Shores to help the Florida Faith Alliance catch the wave of hope and other local organizations to eliminate human trafficking through empowering people to see something and say something. Together, we can rise up to stop this travesty through awareness, education, restoration, and legislation. So thank you for your efforts and we are happy to issue this proclamation from the town.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you have to walk to the microphone?
Sure. All council?
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay.
Maybe you just squeeze together there and then just pull out your rubber dials. There you go. Ooh, careful. One, two, three.
Thank you. And that's Tuesday night here at what time?
Seven.
Seven PM, okay. All right, item four, comments from the public regarding agenda items. Is there any public comment on the agenda items? If there is none, we will then move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
To move. Second.
All right, all, actually, we have some, some resolutions in need of a roll call vote. So we'll do a roll call vote on the consent agenda approval.
Mayor Foley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Alwater?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Altieri?
Aye.
Let the record show the motion passes 5-0.
All right, terrific, thank you. Moving on to item six, the mayor's report. A little longer than usual today, but not too long, I promise. Item number one, we had a request by a member of the Finance Committee to assist that member in encouraging members of the Finance Committee to be in attendance this summer in order to have a quorum when they take up some fairly significant matters such as work on the budget. They had some difficulty getting a quorum last year, I understand, Miss Christmas, and so I'm asking council to, you know, basically provide some consensus so that we can have the relevant administrative staff reach out to those members and ensure their attendance here because it's rather important that, I know it's inconvenient for those who are out of town, but we no longer have the benefit of attending by Zoom, which happened during the COVID era pursuant to an emergency resolution. So it's important that if people undertake the Finance Committee membership responsibility that they understand there are going to have to be some meetings that they're going to have to be here and present for. So without objection, I would ask our town clerk and our town manager to reach out to those members and ensure their availability and report back to us and take whatever steps we need to take to ensure that we have a quorum over the summer for these meetings. I think we all know they do very important work for us because the recommendations I find very helpful. They're an extremely talented group and, you know, I think if we just encourage them to attend, hopefully that will solve the problem. Is there any, any comment on that? Okay, item two, as promised, I just wanted to give an overview briefly of the accomplishments that the council has undertaken during the calendar year 2023. It's hard to believe we're in 2024 already, but we are. And, you know, among the accomplishments that this council has undertaken with the assistance of our, our staff are a number of personnel additions due to attrition. I think through natural attrition, we've, we've had some fairly significant openings in the building department and public safety. And I think that in administrative staff, I think we've, we've had some incredible talent added to it and I know that all of council encourages Mr. Harping to hire the best and the brightest and we have our support and, you know, if you want excellence on the team, you have to have good team players. So that's, that's what I, what I think is one of our greatest accomplishments. I believe we've tightened the management, management procedures among, among the town. It's fairly easy to kind of get settled into the same old routine. That's the way we've always done it, so we're going to do it. Well, I, you know, I give credit to Jim and Janice and Pete for having a look at, you know, items that could be tightened and improved. One that leaves to mind is our use of the consent agenda for now for items that we used to individually go through and they really didn't need it. And if you look at our consent agenda compared to the consent agenda for the County Commission, you know, we're, we're, we're a little late to the game. So I think also we have the, the mechanism, if there's ever any item on here, council knows that they could pull the item and we could have further discussion on it. But I think, I think that was a great, a great addition to our, our process. We are streaming meetings. I know we're working out some technical glitches, but I hope that the lack of in-person attendance means that virtually people are watching our every move here. I think engagement of our town, our town residents is very important for us to get proper feedback, particularly in the off season, in the summer months when we do, the business continues even though the residents may go back up north in some instances. As I mentioned, we have budget issues and all sorts of stuff. So I think that's a great benefit for us and for the town residents. On beach erosion, not really an item we wanted to have to deal with in 2023, but we had to deal with it. For those of you that saw the latest edition of 32963, there was a great article and picture of Councilmember Smith, who's been working very hard on this issue, as has Councilmember Alwater, Councilmember Altieri, and I know Vice Mayor Carroll has as well. We've all worked extremely hard on the issue, as has the administrative staff. I don't think it's an exaggeration to say that this is the first time I feel that are, are pleased to be designated, have Sector 4 designated as a critically endangered area, heard and acted upon. And I think we're also seeing progress in getting funding for restoration and projects in the beach. It was on TV this morning, for those who are watching Channel 34, that noted that Indian River County is moving forward with the restoration and preservation project on these beaches. I'm sure Jim will have some timing for us. If not, sorry for throwing, throwing a question your way that you, you have about half an hour to figure out the answer, so you can go for that. The land development code review, this is one of those projects that I don't think is, has got an awful lot of appeal. It's not something, you know, residents say, "Thank you for deleting all those redundant provisions in the land development code and clearing up any confusion," but it was something that was long overdue and really needed an overhaul. So that, that process began in earnest last year. We've seen some, some of the more simpler items presented to council. We've made those changes and there's more to come and hopefully we will finish that process up by, by the summer. Our continued diligence in the water issues, we have approved a resolution under the consent agenda supporting House Bill 777 and its companion bill, Senate Bill 1088. And then there's another bill that, you know, I presume council will, will join me in supporting, which is House Bill 1277, which is a complementary bill to the aforementioned HB 777. In short, these bills just provide some measure of protection for municipalities that are at the mercy of other municipalities providing water services in terms of fairness and rates and limiting how much money can be transferred over to the general fund. House Bill 1277, which is in its early stages, limits that at 10% of the gross number. It's a start. That's about all I can say, but we'll, we'll continue to follow on that and pursue a legislative agenda. Can't thank Bob Alwater, can't thank Councilman Alwater enough for the work he does on the Utility Commission, being the representative on Treasure Coast Regional League of Cities, where we're often at odds. I know it's not pleasant going into a hostile room, meeting after meeting, but more, more about my winning friends and influencing people at League of Cities later on in this meeting. So thank you, Bob. Thank you, everyone, for the special meetings over the past year and the support in, in making sure that we get the best water services at the best price for our residents and that, more importantly, we ensure an uninterrupted, reliable service flow in the future. You know, this, this particular franchise agreement, you know, does expire eventually and I think what we've all learned is 20, 25 years in the context of utilities is not a very long period of time. So, you know, you really need to, we really need to plan for alternatives and we will continue to do that. We continue to engage the town in countywide and regional matters and, you know, that, that I think is of great importance, you know? If we want a seat at the table in, in everything from funding to influence on county ordinances to, you know, protecting the, the special nature of our area and doing a great service for the wonderful homeowners associations that we have, you know, we, we simply have to be engaged on a continual basis and, you know, that, that involves some effort on our part and thank you, everyone, for that. Our town clerk has instituted town clerk meetings where the town clerks get together and they share information, try not to reinvent the wheel. If somebody knows how to do something, they share it. I'd like to say it's one of the examples of government cooperation. It's, we don't see very much of it in our day and age, but they do a terrific job on that. As for the Public Service Department, thank you, Mark, for being here. Chief is, is out ill. We wish him a very speedy recovery, but there are some terrific things that have been done. I could go through a list that would take half an hour, but ensuring the compatibility of equipment from surrounding departments is just one example of kind of the top to bottom review that, that we've seen. So what do I mean by that? We had oxygen tanks, if I get this wrong, correct me, but we had oxygen tanks that were not necessarily capable of being swapped out with surrounding department equipments should they run low and they be needed. So, you know, those kinds of things, they don't get noticed until something goes wrong. So thank you very much for all of the processes and reviews and we continue to do our best to hire the best and most capable and dedicated people. So those are just some of the accomplishments of the council and, and the staff. And we will, we will continue to do our best for the people of the town and next year we will, we will review 2024 with the same, with the same order that we, we did this year. Last item three, A1A traffic. I'm sure we all get comments from people on it and I get, I get suggestions from instituting toll gates at the beginning of the Wabaso Bridge to 7-Eleven to taking over A1A and putting down like railroad crossing gates and checking residency. Those are not, those are not feasible, obviously not feasible things to do. And we can't have turns only in one direction. We're limited jurisdictionally in what we can do with A1A. These are, you know, seasonal problems and I know they're frustrating. As a, as a year-long resident, I get used to, you know, pulling out and not having to wait 10 minutes to be able to make a turn to the left going, going north. But all in all, I think that, I think that we're seeing, you know, better traffic flows and we'll continue to do what we can to work with our, our partners and stakeholders on a regional, county, and state basis to keep an eye on this. And we'll have to, we'll have to be diligent, particularly when we start seeing, you know, occupancy in the new development behind the 7-Eleven. That is the city of Vero Beach is, just so it's clear, some residents think that's our jurisdiction. It's not. That's the city of Vero Beach. So wish we could do more for traffic on A1A, but I don't think we're going to see toll gates or, or crossing barriers anytime soon. With that, that concludes my report for today. We will move on to council member items. Are there any council member items?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Alwater.
There was the Public Safety Pension Fund meeting yesterday and it covered through the calendar year. So I want to bring you folks up to date and I have, I have a suggestion as, as we go through it. I'm sorry, this is going to take, take a little bit of time. The good news is from a return perspective, the fund's total return was 13.34% over the trailing year. As the markets came back, stock markets improved, interest rates dropped, and so forth. The bad news is that relative to the benchmark that the fund is judged against, we continue to substantially underperform. And that's due primarily to the real estate holdings. It'd be blunt, they're just a disaster. They, they were, they were down over 14% last year. Now, there's, as I've talked with you about before, there's big swings in how the real estate gets valued in these privately held funds as opposed to a publicly traded refund. But even if you look over a three-year period, they've only earned 4.2%, when if you, well, excuse me, they earned 3.2%. If they had been put into a real estate investment trust index fund Vanguard and Fidelity has on it, we could have earned an extra 2 percentage points. The other thing which is hurt is they have two actively managed equity funds, which if I was a portfolio manager, my old job, I'd be scared to death for, for my job. For example, the MFS Growth Fund underperformed by six and a half, no, actually, when you take into account expenses, by 7% last year and by annualized over 4 and 1/4% over the last three years. So, you know, overall net-net, you know, we're just, we're, we're leaving a lot of money on the table because of some of these investment choices. That said, I have some good news to say, is that the board yesterday agreed to reduce the holdings in two of the actively managed equity funds at MFS Growth and Manny and Napier by 10% of assets in each and put them in an index fund. So now we're up to about 40% in Fidelity 500 Index Fund. So that, that is a good news there. So I think we're slowly making progress there, but unfortunately, you know, if you look over the last five years, we've underperformed our benchmark by 4% annually each year for the past five years, doing simple math and not doing compounding, which make it, the fund would be 20% larger if we met the benchmark. You know, that would really cut down on what the public safety officers would have to, have to kick in. The second thing I want to, want to bring up is something that troubled me in the conversation yesterday. We, we had this issue with Bar Crosby before and unfortunately came up with the chairman, Rick Villers. He started to comment about how the multiplier on the pension fund, ours is 2%, where the average is usually about 2.75% and was complaining about that, that the, effectively, the public safety officers is getting a raw deal. I, I was glad I was there, to, you know, his credit, he allowed me to speak. I kind of countered that a little bit. Again, I had to point out that unlike almost every other municipality, all of the insurance tax proceeds under 175, 185, we give all those to the public safety officials, officers, excuse me. Most municipalities take that money and use that to fund their pension funds. There are some that maybe provide about roughly 50%, but there, there's not many of those. And, you know, I, I want to, I had to point that out again. And I pointed out in the actuary gave a report and public safety personnel contributed out of their own pockets $138,000 last year into the fund. The 175, 185 money, which we agreed to give them, was $239,000. So net-net, they, they got $100,000. They contributed nothing in an aggregate. Now, that's not true of every officer because of the way the 175, 185 allocation meant. And you go back year after year, I have a, I have a spreadsheet, I don't have all the numbers quite updated, but the last time I saw where the public safety officers' contributions exceeded the 175, 185 was back in 2012. So it's, it's a great deal for them. The money is compartmentalized. They take it with them when they go and we continue not to get any credit for this. And it really disturbs me because I know we've had some issues with staffing over there. And this information is, is apparently being circulated around that the public safety officers are getting a raw deal in the pension and they're not. And what, what I would ask, if we could get a consensus on this dais, is to direct the town manager and deputy town manager to put an educational primer together because it's a really good deal. And if we're not going to get credit for it, then, then we should change the contract and we're going to hear this stuff. I, I thought we had stopped this and I was troubled that Mr. Villers brought this up again. And so one other thing I want to say on this, and I sort of hesitate doing this, but unfortunately under the sunshine law, I can't have a private conversation with you on this. The Public Safety Fund hires a, an attorney who's supposed to specialize in her, Bonnie Jensen. She does us a disservice. I brought this issue up, she says other communities could contribute to 175, 185 money. And I said, Bonnie, they really don't. There's a few every once in a while do, but not to the same extent happen. And she's also interjected herself on investment matters where she clearly doesn't know what she's talking about. And we, the taxpayers pay for her that. And, and again, it just, it just creates issues. So, you know, as you heard me ad nauseam say, the, when you think about it from a financial perspective, the, the town is a investment management, pension fund management company with a side business of a, of a, of a government, you know? I, I really try to keep on, on top of this. So I, I would ask, you know, be, be happy to answer any questions and I would ask for a consensus to direct the, the deputy town manager and the town manager to put together some sort of educational primer so people know, know the facts over there.
Thank you, Councilman. Comments from council? Questions?
I have a question. The two names you mentioned that were a problem with the pension fund, they're always the same two names. I mean, is there a limit on how long these people can serve or how do they get elected to that? Isn't one of them a former employee?
Well, the-
So, I would ask, be happy to answer any questions, and I would ask for a consensus to direct the deputy town manager and the town manager to put together some sort of educational primer so people know the facts over there.
Thank you, Councilman. Comments from council? Questions?
I have a question. The two names you mentioned that were a problem with the pension fund, they're always the same two names. I mean, is there a limit on how long these people can serve or how do they get elected to that? Isn't one of them a former employee?
Well, the way it works, well, Bar Crosby is retired, so he's not involved anymore. The way the Public Safety Pension Fund is set up, they're required to have a representative from the police side, correct me if I'm wrong, and from the fire side. We appoint two members and then the four elect a chairman. And the chairman lives, not a chairman, excuse me, elect a fifth member, which then a search here. That individual doesn't even live in the town. But the public employees select their two people. And I don't believe there's term limits on that board. Not that I've ever come across, but correct me if I'm wrong, Pete.
Mayor, council, I'm looking now at our code of ordinances. I don't know if there is any type of term limit as was suggested, so I'll look now and find out. But Councilman is correct that they are selected on their side. We're completely independent of town council or any aspect when they're selecting the fire representative and the police representative. That's dictated purely by, I think actually by state statute, quite frankly.
Yes, that's correct.
So, I'll look into that right now and see if I can give you an answer in just a minute.
All right. So, just a couple of comments from me. Thank you for the presentation. The bottom line is, short of appointing two members of the pension board, the council basically is the pocketbook and pays it, pays in the contributions that were required. But we have, according to statute, very limited authority to do anything other than do what we're doing here, which is just to breathe some truth and reason into it. But it's not like we can pass a resolution and say, we disagree, we're going to increase or decrease the rate of return, we're going to fire the attorney. That's something that's really beyond our control. I do think Councilman Alwater has an excellent idea for the town, subject to Mr. Sweeney's okay that we're not interfering with any kind of statutory prohibition or collective bargaining agreement by having an educational seminar to basically walk people through the facts and have an open forum for any of the PSOs that want to attend so that they understand everything from top to bottom. It won't be a public meeting, but I would like to attend that as well because I'd like to educate myself on the top and the bottom of the 175, 185. It is confusing to say the least, and when facts are confusing, it's easy to demagogue the issue. And I think that that's happened an awful lot with disinformation that's been given out to public service officers. I would love to know how many actually benefit from the 175, 185 program? And is there an alternative to structuring the pension plan so that it kind of, those monies benefit everybody as opposed to potentially just a few that are in the program? So, I know that's a lot to swallow, but I guess the request would be, subject to, you corrected me if I've got what you're driving at wrong, Bob, the town to put together a presentation. And if you need to bring in a professional from the town side to have an honest look at this, then let's do that. Because I don't want us to see us losing capable public safety officers who are getting bad information on what the value of the pension program is. And not the least of which, which you didn't mention, which is that consistently we're fully funded or close to fully funded all the time.
And the OPEB is 137% funded. So, that funds the retirees' healthcare insurance. I would challenge anybody to find very many OPEBs that are even 100% funded in this country. Most of them are pay-as-you-go.
Yep. So, education is always good. And I guess we don't need a resolution for this. I think we just need a consensus. If there's no objection, do you understand how to proceed?
Yes, sir.
And Pete, if you have somebody in-house that does pension or RISA stuff, by all means, feel free to do it for free since we pay your firm so much money on an ongoing basis.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. Although we don't have anybody like that, so it'll be free for nothing.
All right, touche. No, I don't want us to cheap out on this. We should do what we need to do in order to hopefully have our side of the story out there and present it in one location. I've envisioned, for those that can't make it a PowerPoint, also so that it can be distributed to people so that they understand the benefits of a fully-funded program that is structured the way ours is.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I recall from our two past negotiations, Heather did some really nice work on this that maybe can be updated to she gave to the town council time and gave to the employees as well. I mean, it was open kimono. They saw all the stuff, the survey she did and everything else. Look, I know it was a lot of work, but I just think this is so important. I mean, we're not going to get credit for this and we're going to have a lot of turnover. Why the hell do it? I mean, really? Because the taxpayers are shoveling a pretty good amount of money. Since 2012 through 2013, the 175, 185 plan that we gave directly to the public safety officers totaled $2,183,000. You know, it's not insignificant. It's a small force there. It's not a 400-person force. That's real money.
Certainly, if Heather can help us from not reinventing the wheel, that's great. And why don't we proceed with that and we'll put some dates together? I think your points are very well taken, Councilman Alwater, and we're all on the same team here. We want our public safety officers to have good retirement plans. We want it as an attractive tool for recruiting. But we also want there to be a corrected misinformation of saying, well, it's 2% as opposed to 2.75%. Therefore, you're getting a better deal in municipality X if you go to them. Well, they may only be 40% funded. Who knows if that pension plan's even going to be around in 50 years to pay out? You know, the assumptions in the plan are not the same. So, I think that there's benefit in education and I'm all supportive of it. So, let's proceed with that. Councilmember Smith.
So, the only problem I see is if you get this educational seminar together is getting the PSOs to attend.
Oh, then put a slide deck together.
What?
Put a slide deck together and make sure they all get it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Mr. Harpering?
My thought would be we would go ahead and put together a presentation, something that we could provide publicly here, place on the website, and just simply distribute to everyone over there with directions if they had any questions to contact those that we identify in that regard. It would be something that we would go ahead and distribute to everybody, all the relevant parties involved.
To Councilmember Smith's point, I don't know if we can get an informal survey of how many would be interested in hearing a presentation from the town. That's a good point. If we're going to go through this effort and only two people show up, I don't know what more we can do. But I have a feeling that if they understand that we're trying to give them an overview of where we stand on this and how they benefit, as opposed to maybe some negative information that the public safety officers are hearing from representatives on the pension board, then they may be interested in attending. Just a thought. If there's interest, a good percentage, then let's proceed. I think it's a good point. So, we all in agreement on that? And if not, let's just put a deck together and say, you may want to read this at your leisure. It's an important enough issue for them that I'd be surprised if we don't get a fairly significant number of people to attend. So, but let's poll it, see what we can get. We'll take care of it. All right, terrific. Thank you very much. While we're on this topic, and to save it later on in the meeting, I did ask the town manager to circulate a bill that was introduced. I don't know if it has a Senate companion bill yet. That does affect contributions to pensions and we're watching that because that may have an impact on what the town is required to contribute and limited to contribute. I'll confess, I looked at it very quickly and when I looked at it, I said, this doesn't really affect us yet because we're well above the thresholds for public safety officers that are required by that bill. But, you know, my old saw is, a bill starts out as a horse and by the time it gets out of the committee, it becomes a three-humped camel. So, we need to watch the bill to make sure that there isn't an impact on us as we head into budget season as well because these things festly and furiously can kind of work their way through session. And then at the end of the session, all of a sudden, bang, we've got to come up with some money. Or we're limited in terms of what we can contribute. There was some talk about that. Anyway, just something to watch. All right, anything else on this item? Nothing? All right, moving on to item 8A, discussion with possible or probable action. We had at last meeting said for council members to consider who would like to volunteer to be on the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council as the primary designee to attend particular meetings.
I'll do that.
All right, without objection, Vice Mayor Carroll would like to be the primary designee. Is anybody interested in alternate? I'm happy to be the alternate. I'm here year-round, so meetings that Sam cannot attend, I'll do my best to make myself available. They don't, Councilman Alwater, you can refresh my record. I think there's only one summer meeting anyway, right?
Yeah, they're not every single month.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, it's a pretty interesting thing. I will say, when I first got on council, there were these mysterious acronyms like MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization, and Regional Planning Council. And, you know, there's no manual that tells us how we do this, right? So, I had no clue what they were. And then you go and you find out that they actually, Regional Planning Council actually has a fairly significant input in terms of what happens regionally. And it's not just good for us to participate in the process, but also to be aware of what's happening. So, I think you'll enjoy it, Sam. All right, item 8B, Brightline stop, Fort Pierce. Fort Pierce has asked us to support your effort to get a station stop at Brightline. Did you want to speak to that?
I followed the efforts in that regard. I know that the city of Vero Beach submitted a letter to Brightline in support of a stop in Fort Pierce. I support that as well. And I think it's probably a good idea for the council to commission a letter to Brightline. I don't think there's any other avenue to which we might express our opinion to other than write directly to Brightline.
All right, thank you. Any other comments on that?
I'll just say it was a very well-done presentation that they put together. I sent a note to Mayor Linda Hudson and she responded, said, basically, thanks for your potential support. So, I would be in favor as well. Somebody's actually used Brightline to take a train from West Palm Beach down to watch a Phillies-Marlins game. It's a great way to travel and avoid I-95. And if we could leave from Fort Pierce rather than having to drive down to West Palm Beach, I think it would be even better.
I also thought the presentation was really well-done. I thought they did an excellent job in all their background. My only question is, and we might not be able to answer this, is will that increase the train traffic once they have another stop there? Is Brightline limited in how many trains they can throw through here? No.
Mayor, council, as being a former city attorney for Fort Pierce, became very intimately aware of Brightline. As I understand it, there is no limitation on their hours of operation. It's business-driven. The earliest trains leave from Miami, now Miami Station, very early, I believe 5:00 or even 4:45 coming the other way from Orlando and returning as late as 10:00 or 10:30. So, there are no hours of operation on that. It really is, as I understand it, and they've always conveyed, a business model where it's designed to have people use it. And that would mean getting them from Miami to Orlando early in the morning to visit Disney World and possibly get back, or vice versa. So, much of what we've heard is, try to keep it moving quickly, but I don't believe there's any legal limitation on the number of trains they could run. The only limitation that I'm aware of is the settlement requires the station to be built in either Martin County or St. Lucie County. So, that settlement does not conceive of any station in any river county. So, to Councilman Altieri's point, the closest place would be St. Lucie County.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well. The, I think, you know, I think there was a, I will say, Mayor Hudson, I spoke to her after a meeting last week and she said she would appreciate our support of it. I don't know if it's true or not, but I'm going to say it anyway. My intuition tells me that with a stop in Fort Pierce, if anything, it would have the effect of slowing down train traffic because they can't be screeching through at 80 miles an hour and then hitting the brakes. So, maybe there's a tentative benefit. I've also heard the, you know, the number of trains increasing is not likely because the ridership has turned out to be very disappointing thus far. So, you know, the economics are always going to drive this and unless a trend happens where people are going to opt to take all their suitcases and five kids and put them on the train and take them to Miami instead of loading up a rented minivan, my intuition tells me it's probably not going to be tons and tons of trains coming through. So, if there's consensus, we will issue a letter supporting Fort Pierce's request. I thought the presentation was excellent as well. And we'll move on to the next item, which are staff updates. Mr. Held is out. We had the report. Statistics look about normal for this time of year.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council, everything seems to be tracking consistently. Just a couple of quick notes. The eighth edition of the Florida Building Code's now in effect. Also, you may have noted or recall that there are milestone inspections that are required to be done as a result of the Surfside collapse and new change in law. So, we've had actually nine buildings that fit within those parameters that we received those inspections. Keep in mind, we are, as the town, essentially the repository. There's no statutory requirement for us to do anything with those. The statute just simply names the local jurisdiction as the repository. So, I just note that we've had nine so far that were done prior to the December 31st, that particular deadline. So, if you have any other questions on that, please get with me or a building official. And finally, we're continuing in the large process of migrating over to the new software company that makes the building department software speak with and consistent with what everybody else is doing. That's been a little longer-term migration because the county did it, Sebastian did it. So, we're all in a system that, you know, hopefully we'll talk to each other data-wise. And that's all I have from the building department.
Anything on building? All right, item 9B, Town Treasurer Report.
You have my report. If I have any questions, I'm willing to answer them. If not, I also attended the pension board meeting that was held this past Tuesday. One action that they did is they did approve the upcoming actuarial evaluation for this fiscal year. And the impact of that is the employees' required contribution rate went from 9% to 8.09% of salary. And the town's contribution went from 22.74% of punishable salary to 17.79%. So, that will be reflected. I'm going to do a budget adjustment for that. They also changed the assumptions on, so they're now taking a prospective approach to the assumptions or to the actuarial. to the assumptions or to the actuarial evaluation. So these will be our contribution requirements for next year as well. So when I do the budget for next year, I will be using these rates and they will not change. So that was one change they made. The pension fund is 95.9% funded with a 6.75% assumed, assumed rate of return. At a 5.75%, which I have that number, it would be about 87.7%. So that is what I have for the pension fund. If anyone has any questions?
Any questions? Pension fund?
No, no question. Just point out the Florida retirement system using the same, I believe the same investment assumption we are, are very close. They're only 82% funded. We're 97. And probably that was as, uh, those, the figure for us was as of the end of the fiscal year, which would have been September 30th. We're probably, with the market run up, probably over a hundred percent right now. So.
Yeah. Thank you for that. You know, typically if you, if you graph this, we're, we're, we're more at fully funded than we are, or near fully funded, you know,
Yeah.
within two, two, three percentages than we are below that.
Yes.
Right? Okay. Thanks.
And the only other item is I will, as I just said, I will be having a budget amendments in February for the first set of budget amendments.
Thank you. When does audit season start again?
Audit, budget season start, is starting right now, but, um, we will hopefully have the financial statements in March or April. It depends on when we get the actuarial valuation for the general employee benefit plan.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Chief Shaw, Public Safety.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council. Uh, I just want to start by saying how appreciative as me being the most senior public safety officer, what our pension means. I think some of the younger guys, it's just, it's a lack of information. So everything Council Member, uh, Atwater said, I think is spot on. Um, I think they would be well served by having an informational meeting. I can preach it to them until I'm blue in the face, but you know, sometimes they want to hear it from somebody that's a little more knowledgeable on the topic. But for me personally, I want to thank each and every one of you. Um, I'm close to retiring. So, you know, a couple of years, I am more than appreciative of the pension and, and everything that you guys have done and continue to do for public safety. So that means a lot to me. Um, so next item, we, uh, Councilman Atwater and, uh, Mr. Harper and I met with FDOT yesterday about the crosswalk. I think it was a very informative meeting. I think it was good. Uh, Chris Karras is the Treasure Coast Supervisor for FDOT. I think it was important for him to have eyes on the area. I think we agreed upon, uh, a plan of action. How long that's going to take, I, I can't tell, but he promised to keep us in the loop with everything that he's doing. But it was very important. Unfortunately, the crash data is against us. It's one of our biggest hurdles. Um, that's why it was important for him to come and see. While we were standing there yesterday, we had residents that were crossing the road and the traffic was heavy. So it was, it was important for him, I think, to see. I think he got an eye opening, uh, you know, by being there and actually seeing it. So we are moving forward with the crosswalk. Uh, and the other, only other item I had was the derelict vessels.
May, may I just stop to make a, make a couple of comments? So I pointed out, uh, Mark and I pointed out to him, you know, there is a, a town owned public beach access path. And he, he made an interesting comment. And I said, wow, that's, he said, I drive past here all the time. I never knew this thing existed. And I thought, wow, that's, that's, that's an interesting point. Down at the south end of Vero Beach, uh, down in the area of 17th Street Bridge, there are beach access paths down there because they're kind of similar to ours. They sort of blend in. They actually have signs there. I, I, I would suggest that's something we think about. Uh, I would use what Vero Beach did. I think it's a, an ugly sign, but maybe we just think about putting a, a, a sign up there to make people aware, you know, that, that is a way to get to the, uh, the beach where, you know, have, uh, any issues. But I thought that was a very telling, uh, comment of him because I'd suggested that maybe we put the crosswalk there. It's not in front of 7-Eleven and CVS where you got all this cross traffic going back and forth with the landscapes and everything. But have it up there and have it, and, and, uh, build a sidewalk south from the point of the beach access. It's only be, I don't know, maybe a couple hun, a couple hundred feet, which would connect in with the, the sidewalk in front of, uh, CVS and so forth. And then that way, people get to CVS, they could get to 7-Eleven, they could get to, uh, get to the beach. But, uh, uh, maybe, Dan, I would ask for some consensus to ask the, uh, the town manager to look at the idea of putting a, uh, just a sign up. Not, not real big, but, uh, no. All right. Thanks for letting me in.
He was checking on that. We're, we're supposed to be getting one. They may have done it, but he was checking on it. So if he, it hasn't been done, it will be done in the next month or so. I left yesterday feeling more positive about it than I have in any time previous. So I think it was a good sign.
Does it make sense to, you know, see what the response is before we start throwing out alternatives? Um, because, you know, it.
I, I mean, Mark, uh, I, I, I think you and I agreed to kind of let him go through their process, see if it gets approved. If not, he, there's an alternative, which I didn't really understand. Maybe you have better knowledge of me about going through a permit process. I didn't understand what he was talking about there as an alternative.
I think that, that alternative involves the town kind of initiating and maybe funding a portion of.
Yeah. So let's not do that yet. So, but he, you know, uh, to the deputy chief's point, uh, I, I've worked with Chris, Chris Karras on, on some other, other things. He, he listens, he's, he's responsive. He, he made the comment and he says, you know, I can look at it on a map or even Google Street Map. He says, driving up here from Fort Pierce and seeing what's going on at, uh, you know, particularly at that time of day, thank God there was a lot of traffic. The traffic was backing up, uh, from the BEMR all the way up there. As, uh, as, as Deputy Chief said, a lady came, came across and she got stuck in the middle and Mark had to stop traffic. And Mark turned to Chris and said, yeah, I paid her to do that. So, but, 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 but it, but it really did illustrate the point. You know, the place is a mess down there. I mean, we all know that, but for him, for him to see, he was taking pictures. I, I put, I put maps together, uh, for him, uh, marking all things out with distances and so forth. So I think it was, I think it was a really good meeting. So, uh, so I'll give you credit for getting that schedule. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Yeah. No, I feel real positive with it. So, um, next item was the derelict vessels. We've been dealing with the derelict vessels in the Indian River Lagoon. Last summer at our max, we had seven. We're down to three. Of the three, one is in the process. It's already been tagged. It, it should be removed in the next 30 days and then we'll start the process on the last two. It's going to be a pretty fluid, ongoing, you know, enforcement deal with us, with the new anchoring limitation area. So we're, we're rolling with it, but we're down to three and, and hopefully here very shortly we'll have those last three out. I think that's all I had. Do you guys have any questions?
I have, just have one from the beach and shores meeting. They talk about the derelict vessels and it seems like there are always the same amount of vessels out there because they said that soon as you get rid of some, some more replace them. And there's just no way we can monitor that. I mean, how do you know if they're going to abandon it? You don't.
Correct. And the, the one that's still out there, um, it looks like some kids had got on and, and just tore it up, knocked all the windows out, you know, did more damage to it. So it is a nuisance. I mean, obviously, you know, the kids that live down in that area are, uh, you know, got little dinghies that they'll ride out and through those little cuts. And, and yeah, they're boarding these vessels and, you know, somebody gets hurt. Yeah, it's, it's an issue. But unfortunately, like, like you said, we get three removed and a couple of months later, we got another one.
And they can moor those boats anywhere?
So the new anchoring limitation area, um, which has just gone into effect, you know, it's still new. We're educating people because there is a gentleman that's somewhere right off of Pebble, uh, Pebble Beach Estates there is living on it. Now, he says he moves it every, whatever the 10 days, whatever the timeframe is, um, you know, he'll move a couple hundred feet one way or the other. Um, but we got to get out there and educate and we, we're, we're doing that. Our patrol boat has been out there. They just went out yesterday and, uh, put eyes on the vessels that we still have. So we're, we're working on it. But like I said, it's, it's going to be a constant thing. This will, this will be a, a fluid thing that we're just going to be dealing with.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. It, you know, this coming, most of us, all of us here come from the private sector. This seems like a pretty easy problem to solve. Um, and Councilmember Smith, every time I drive over, uh, the Barber Bridge, I look to the right and I see that same derelict boat that's been there, um, submerged for 120 days. Um, you look to the left, you see the same one that's been there for more than 120 days. Uh, the anchoring limitation area, which this council supported is a tool, but it's not a panacea because all you have to do is move out of that anchoring limitation area before the time is up. Um, it's time consuming. You have to get the GPS data to prove the case. So it's a tool and, you know, thank you. I know it's going to be, um, an added brick on your load to do that, but, but it is important. Um, uh, and then, uh, worked with Commissioner O'Brien on what, what the county dubbed, uh, Operation Leaky Bottom, which was what led to the anchoring limitation area. Um, our biggest impediment was Fish and Wildlife Services in the state. Um, they're cooperative, but they throw up their hands and they say, well, if there's a working radio on the boat, um, that limits you from, you know, tagging it as derelict and getting it out of there. So you look in this, there's a, I call it the tugboat. And I, I don't know if that's one of the boats.
Oh, it's gone. Yeah, that's gone.
That's gone. Um, nobody had touched this boat for probably five years and it had fuel in the tank. It was an environmental disaster waiting to happen. But because under the current guidelines, you know, there was a radio, um, that if you attached a battery to it, it would work, um, couldn't touch it. You had to go through this process of trying to track down the owner. Um, we have enough, um, work with the legislature right now, but, um, Florida state law favors live abords on a boat. It's kind of a policy of the state that they want to be a boater friendly place. I think we want to be boater friendly too, but, um, there's got to be a corrective balance between people who, you know, everything from insurance jobs to, you know, to, uh, uh, just, you know, abandoning a boat that, you know, they don't, uh, they don't want their brother in law to get as part of the estate settlement. I mean, there are a panoply of reasons why people are abandoning these vessels. And I think, you know, we, we, um, we may be well served reaching out to our other community partners, Orchid, us, City of Vero Beach and the county. I know the county, some people in the county would be supportive of, um, you know, trying to get some state legislation that actually makes a little bit easier and a little bit more common sense, uh, to take care of obvious problems because try to explain to John Q. Citizen that those two boats I mentioned, and those are just the two most obvious ones, uh, can't be touched because, you know, somebody may come back someday where there's a working radio. It's nonsensical. So, uh, so anyway, that's, you know, maybe that's a legislative issue for us to take up next year, ask, you know, Representative Brackett or Senator Groll to, uh, to have a look at this. But we know you're doing everything you can do. So anything you need from us politically, we'll be happy to support it.
No, I appreciate that.
Yep. Anything else for, all right. Um, let's move on to Public Works.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, aside from, uh, you know, the variety of, uh, things that are going on day to day, um, uh, Mr. Bryant, our Public Works Director, myself and, uh, some folks from DOT and their contractor, uh, Wilco, are going to be, uh, out, uh, on A1A, uh, conducting a survey of, uh, the bike path and all of that work that's going on. Um, the majority of that work is, uh, associated with, uh, electrical work that's being done by FPL subcontractors. There is some other contractors out there, but, um, we've already documented and are following up on issues, uh, like reflectors and turn signals that hadn't been replaced in locations that, that should be as well as a, a lot of the issues on the bike path. So, uh, we'll be out there tomorrow, uh, doing a survey, pinning and marking every particular location, uh, along, uh, you know, along the bike path and, um, uh, and, and following up on that. Uh, so that's pretty much what we have in, um, uh, Public Works. Other than I, I did want to mention, we do continue to, uh, survey the beach and I'll mention some more about the, the beach in a minute. Um, uh, Larry was very, uh, very helpful in, uh, getting us our, uh, our sand at Beach Comer in a timely fashion and getting our contractors and stuff like that together, um, after some of the more recent, uh, recent degradation. And keep in mind for us, that particular piece is a, uh, really a, a, a public welfare, uh, piece for us to be able to have public safety and Public Works to be able to get down on the beach. So that's what I have in the context of Public Works, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anything while he's wearing his Public Works hat? No? Okay. Uh, item 9E, Code Enforcement Report. Somebody's playing hide and seek with a boat on a trailer with you, huh?
Good morning.
A lot of education, more education than anything, but you got to do it.
Can you, can you just tell me what, if you could give me an example or in this case, what, what's a landscaping violation?
Um, overgrown grass.
Okay.
Hedges too big. Um, instance, trees are out of others.
Okay.
Not giving away.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, want to start by following up on the comment you made about our, uh, our consent agenda. I was at Board of County Commission on Tuesday and their consent agenda goes all the way to AG. So we've got a little bit more work to get there, but, um, I'm sincerely appreciative of being able to do that. Moving into some of my items, the first is, and if we have it up there, thank you Heather, um, vacation rental. So as Mayor mentioned, we are in the middle of session at State in Tallahassee. Uh, we're about three and a half weeks in and will be ending very quickly in the beginning of March. So just a quick background, if any of council doesn't have the history of vacation rentals in Florida. Uh, prior to 2014, there really was no regulation at the state level of short-term or vacation rentals. Those terms are used relatively interchangeably. Um, they are all generally understood to mean anything less than six months because once you do six months in Florida for a lease, it is exempt from sales tax and that's the main reason why. So there was no background in two, go ahead. Thank you Heather. In 2014, uh, the state was a little bit late to the game. Airbnb, VRBO and several of these other operators had really started to get momentum and locally jurisdictions had started to implement ordinances, regulations and rules regarding short-term vacation rentals. Uh, section 509023 was instituted and it had a very specific preemption language that you could not regulate any of those types of, of uses based solely on either classification, use or occupancy. So a lot of people were, uh, attempting to suggest they could not be in single family zoning sections such as an RS2, a 3 or, or whatever the corollary would be in your area. Also limit the number of days or also limit if you had to be a certain number of people. Anything that was in existence in any area, county or city otherwise, prior to June 1 of 2011 was grandfathered. So you could have those restrictions even though the state, uh, instituted the new statute, you know, if you can move forward. The town did not have anything. So start with the background that the town never would have been in a grandfathered status. We always were subject to the statute. However, we had some ability to, and, and everybody did, to regulate on other bases. And a lot of them should and are tied directly to life, health and safety issues. Um, jurisdictions such as fire code inspections, ingress egress, objective things, uh, number of parking stalls or parking, uh, limitations at a unit. So we in 2019 instituted 161.20 and I'll, I'll pass out the, uh, full background of all of this along with that in a minute if we can move forward. Um, as probably many of you are aware, this industry has not only blossomed, but now has become, uh, a behemoth, particularly in Florida with our tourist draw. So we are currently in compliance with state law. Last legislative session last year, Senate Bill 714 died literally on the next to last day, virtually, uh, going back and forth between the two houses. It would have preempted virtually everything to the state, including those that had been grandfathered in before. It also would have given DDP It also would have given DBPR, which is the highest department in Florida that regulates a lot of subdivisions such as hotels. They would have had more teeth and also would have been responsible theoretically for more licensing or scope of responsibility, and it also would have cut back on some of our ability. It did die. However, if we can move forward, it is again back in the legislative session, and it is a, I believe, a top-tier issue. It has moved through. The main bill is 280, and as I have it up here now, 280 has been already recommended and referred to two different industries. It passed both of those regulated industries as a subcommittee and Fiscal Policy is another one, almost universally, although in Fiscal Policy it was a 12-5, but it has now had a second reading. It continues to move forward, and my understanding is that there will be another reading tom, I'm sorry, later today at some point on that. Of course, it has to pass both houses and would have to move forward, and we are getting closer to the end, but if it were to pass, we obviously would have to come into compliance because regardless of whether they're going to allow previously grandfathered, we never would have been grandfathered in anyway. So I don't want to be premature and start to suggest we need to move forward with anything. It may die. It may be modified several times. There's already been a committee substitute, but I want you all to be aware, this is moving forward. I think it's appropriate to follow. You may have seen an article, the county has added at least one dedicated code enforcement officer to start to add policing to this. They utilize an outside vendor to essentially check the advertising platforms, Airbnb, VRBO, and several others that are out there to find compliance, but it's going forward. So by next meeting, I should have a essentially end-of-session report to be able to update you on this.
Are there significant differences between the House and Senate bills?
At this point, the House bill, there are some not significant, I would not say, Councilman. There are some, but the Senate bill is really driving it, and probably some of the biggest things are, again, number one, registration fees and licensing fees would almost totally be preempted to the state or really diminished to a very low level locally. That was one thing that was designed to try to make responsible operators if they had to pay for a certain threshold. They weren't just doing it on a whim. They would be responsible and truly into the industry. That is probably going to be reduced, and again, preempted in part to the state. The second part will be the licensing, and there's the state-level licensing. There's a local sales tax license that you would have to get locally here to remit those sales taxes. So there are several versions, but I can tell you theoretically what this would do would preempt a lot of that licensing to the state, and if there's compliance issues, arguably has to be reported back to the state. The problem is DBPR, the closest that I'm aware of, agency headquarters is in Orlando. The next closest south of us, they have an ancillary office, I believe in Palm Beach, but really at Fort Waterdale. So it's just very difficult to police when there's nobody here.
And notably, they're not giving additional funding to the.
Most importantly.
They're giving them more responsibility but no additional funding.
Yes. So to follow up on the mayor's point, again, these are often referred to as unfunded mandates, where the state will require local municipalities or counties to do things, to come into compliance, and we've talked about many of these over the last couple of years, including Septic Sewer and many of these other things, without providing funding. They may provide a grant form, but there's been no appropriations asked.
And the other point is that they're not providing funding to DBPR to hire additional people to actually keep track of what's going on, even though they're taking their responsibility. So Councilman Alwater said laissez-faire. It's actually, it's that and worse. It's basically, we know you're never going to be able to keep track of this, so we're basically deregulating the whole thing.
Kind of love those lobbyist stuff there. They do a great job.
Okay, I have a question. So if this goes through, does that mean that our town would have no ability to regulate vacation rentals in the town?
We will, we will likely have limited, more limited than we already have, ability to regulate. However, again, this all functions with so many different aspects. A building, whether it's in a condo, a townhome, a single-family residence, still would have to comply with so many things under the Florida Building Code. So that's where a lot of our authority and regulation would still lie, but as far as maybe, again, zoning aspects or limitations on them or days, the actual license application from one of the things I've seen, you used to have to apply, and if you got denied at a local level, it was all local. Now, if you're denied at a local level, you apply to the state, and they essentially have veto power or override power to require us to issue it.
But just to be clear, none of this affects homeowners' associations' rights to limit vacation rentals? So this is in the absence of an HOA restriction in the Declaration of Condom.
Absolutely.
Declaration of Co-op. So if J.I., for example, says you have to have a minimum three-month rental, none of the legislation would affect that because they're not touching, they couldn't touch that.
That's absolutely true.
Those covenants that roam the land.
Yes, absolutely true. This will solely apply to our ability to regulate essentially from a government perspective. We see this all the time with associations when they have their own architectural review committees for land development or building process, and the same thing for, as you said, restrictions on rental access, egress, any of those things. Those would be private property rights governed by the association documents. And again, I will just provide information as I get it.
Okay, so an example would be Beach Comer. There's a lot of private homes on Beach Comer. So like if seven homes on Beach Comer decided to be verboes and have a zillion people there with a zillion cars and making noise, there's nothing we could do about that?
From the vacation rental sort of licensing aspect, we wouldn't be able to, but there's so many other ways that we could. For example, if people were parking in the right of way, or parking on the street, we could utilize our police enforcement powers to do stuff like that. We have a noise ordinance. They have to comply by that. So all of the standard municipal policing powers we still have, we just wouldn't be able to say to your example, Beach Comer will be prevented from having vacation rentals, period. Yes, sir. So that's what I wanted to provide for background of vacation rentals. The only other one that I wanted to mention out of note that was mentioned before was sovereign immunity. That also is moving through. There is really just one bill there that would be 472, and the relevant portion there would change the limits. The current limits are what's known as $200, $300. So that's $200,000 per claimant if there was a claim against a municipality, a sovereign entity, a county, the state, any of those. A claimant could claim up to $200,000 or $300,000 if there was multiple individuals making the same claim. The proposed new limits would go to $400,000 for an individual or $600,000 collectively. And I believe Mayor Foley mentioned last year's limits, same, again, was proposed last year, but were almost 10 times that. I believe it was $2.5 million and $5 million. That died, but this again has some traction, is now continues to move forward. So I'm watching those two closely, as well as other ones that the mayor and working with Jim, we've identified, just to make sure we stay abreast of what's going on. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
No, and obviously on sovereign immunity, two major impacts. It encourages lawsuits if the limitation on liability is actually higher and the effect on insurance rates for us, so as a municipality. So, you know, we'll have to watch that.
Yes, sir. And that's my report.
Anything for Pete? All right, thank you for that thorough and informative report. Mr. Harper, item 11, Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Just a brief Sector 4 update here today. We're still, we've provided all of our data to DEP, and we continue to have discussions back and forth with them regarding necrotal erosion designation. I don't have a timeframe for response on that, but we continue to work on that. Associated with that, and again, not speaking for the county, and I know that Councilmember Smith was at Beach Shore, but we still await, we're, I've tried to manage expectations and tell people that I thought, timing-wise, having the county lined up to do the dune restoration in Sector 4 in the town, beginning in the fall after turtle nesting season, is a more reasonable timeframe to expect than what we're, you know, what we're currently looking at now, which is no prospective start date. I believe that the county's doing everything they can. They're continuing to work through the permitting process with Army Corps of Engineers and DEP, and the town has stood at the ready and has assisted in a variety of different things in that regard to try to support the county's work there. I will have a substantive update in February, presentation on Sector 4, history, current status, and then where we may be going. So I'll elaborate further at that point in time. I will note that there is one pending private dune replacement project getting ready. We've authorized a beach access. It's a private home down here that was hit previously pretty hard, and so they do have the DEP permission for limited dune replacement right behind their structure. Moving on, the mayor mentioned Phase 2 or the Land Development Code changes. Mr. Heldon and I just had a meeting yesterday with our consultants and have gone through in substance pretty much everything else that's out there in Phase 2. We anticipate having some documents for review and recommendations, and certainly we'll have the final package ready for a series of, you know, public presentation and then a council discussion and vote on those before the summer. So we'll have that done, you know, by May, should hopefully be the second reading once we get through that. So we're trying to move along with that in a timely manner. As a little attendant to the mayor's comments on the Finance Committee, there are going to be some openings just simply as a result of timing on planning zoning, finance, and pension this November. So if anybody has any questions or wants any information on that, we're going to post some general information on the website, and everyone can call Janice. You're welcome, Janice. They can call Janice to discuss those dates and those openings and some of those responsibilities. The Indian River Land Trust on March 8th is going to be having an in-the-field event down here at Be Gun Point, so you may see some extra traffic and parking. We've offered the town a lot to assist them because it's proximate to the entrance. So in that regard, we are going to be, you'll start to see, the town just push out some information in that regard. They have an approved flyer that we just got. So again, that's March 8th. It's a walking tour event back here in Be Gun Point. Finally, I would like to take a particular note. It's often overlooked, but not by the town. I want to thank Janice very much for her work on the cemetery. Again, it's not something that a lot of us like to be actively involved in or thinking about, but that being said, it's something that's very important to the staff, and we take it very seriously. We've got an irrigation project coming up during the summer to get better irrigation out there, get it cleaned out a little bit, but in particular, I want to thank Janice for the management of that because she is on point with all the folks and, you know, and the bereaved people that, you know, are calling and stuff like that, and it's, she just does a great job with the residents on that. That's all I have, unless there's any other questions, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Anything for Mr. Harper? All right, easy, easy day for you then, Jim. So. It's probably because we've been bugging you all week, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, item 12, Council Committee Reports. Let's start from right to left. Councilmember Smith.
Okay, so Indian Shores was Monday. Jim has already summed up what happened, but if anyone would like a few more details, I can give you a little more details on exactly why all that happened. We have most of the easements for Sector 4. Only one was denied, so that was good. And they almost have the FDEP permit, which Jim said, and he went through the timeline if we received that permit, let's say tomorrow. And then they did the two weeks posting, public postings, and then the month for the construction bids, and then at least two or three more weeks to go over that. That would put us in mid-April. So, and the hard stop on the turtles is the end of April. So that's why they've decided that even if we do get the permit, that it won't happen until next November. And then they made a little bit of a fuss over the Army Corps of Engineers, which found some kind of possible historical artifact. As far as what I've heard is it's a piece of wood that's sitting off the coast, but that still has to be investigated, and it probably will turn out to be nothing, which is good. And now that we're not doing any work until November anyway, we have plenty of time to get that done. So I just encouraged the county and Eric, who runs the Natural Resources, to not, to not just sit back and wait because, oh, we finally got the permits, but we've got till November. So, and the only other thing I think that could impact it is if we had a storm. I mean, I don't know what it means if we had a hurricane in October, whether they would actually start in November, but we'll probably have a go, and depending on the weather, we'll see what happens.
Great, thank you.
That's it.
Any questions on that? All right. The report, Florida League of Cities. So I'm going to preface it by saying we, as a member of the Florida League of Cities, there are many, many items that we share a common interest with, but as a smaller municipality, there are also some items that we do not share an interest with. Florida League of Cities, just because of the way it's structured, I don't think it's a controversial statement to say that they tend to opt in favor of the larger municipalities' agenda when there's a conflict between a larger municipal agenda and a smaller municipalities' agenda. That's the case with us and the League of Cities' position on Representative Brackett's Bill 777 on water utilities. And so unfortunately, as I said earlier, making friends and influencing people, at the League of Cities meeting, I had to say that the town of Indian River Shores could not support the League of Cities' resolution this year on its legislative action items because it's a blanket resolution that would be in opposition to House Bill 777 and any of the related bills, and there's really no mechanism to parse out our support for some resolutions as opposed to others. As you can imagine, it didn't make very many people in the room all that happy, but I did suggest that perhaps going forward, there could be a mechanism where we would support individual line items in a resolution of the League of Cities, such as the vacation rental bills and things that we share a common interest. I would not hold my breath for that. I think that League of Cities just has, the way it's structured, from everything from who pays the dues and how much, based upon the size of the municipality, they're going to want to use the full clout to support their legislative agenda. So we are at odds. That's why we adopted a resolution that is at odds with the League of Cities, and we're supporting, you know, the attempts to reform water utilities. It's a, it's still a worthwhile organization, so I don't mean to suggest that, you know, we should, you know, stamp our feet and say, you know, we're never going to this again because I think we greatly benefit by being involved in it, and I will say this, that there were some smaller municipalities that had representatives that came up to me afterwards and said, you know, I never really thought about it that way. You know, we've had a franchise agreement in place for umpteen years, and we get it from, you know, the Fort Pierce Water Authority, and, you know, we should be watching this a little bit more carefully. Some didn't even know they were paying surcharges. So I think, I think that there's an awareness that came about as a result of that, but that's why we're not supporting the broader legislative agenda, even though there are items that we would support. All right, I wasn't escorted to the door, thrown out of the meeting, so I will be attending next month's meeting, and that's my report.
On January 3rd, I attended the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee meeting. We received a very thorough and excellent report from Chris Balter, who's the chief of Long Range Planning. Two items from that report that I would like to highlight. The first is that, you know, sort of a broad, general sense, very important that the State Housing Initiative Partnership, SHIP acronym, has approved $1.5 million of funding for the current year, and that's an ongoing source of funding for the, for the affordable, for affordable housing in the county. And the second interesting point is that there's a new clause which was very well-received. It's called a foreclosure prevention clause, and the agreement is that And the agreement is that if a homeowner risks defaulting on his or her mortgage, that said homeowner can seek financial help to bridge the gap, to get back on track with payments. And that amount of money is $8,000. It's in the form of a loan, but the interest rate on the loan is 0% to your term, and the forgiveness is 100%. And so that, that's a, that's a new twist to help homeowners in these, in the circumstances where they may fall behind. Our next meeting is on February 28th, and I plan to attend that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Alwater.
Well, we didn't have, we didn't have a Utilities Commission meeting this month. They canceled it, so presumably we're going to have one next month. I want to try to get an update on any cost information regarding the water and sewer plant by the airport. They've been very silent about that, which I just find rather amazing and troubling. There was an MPO meeting last month, it was just primarily administrative stuff. Usually in January, we don't have one, so it'll be, it'll be next month. I just want to say, Mr. Mayor, thank you for bringing up and pushing back against them. They need, they need to hear that. I listened to some of the Florida League of Cities, they have a call at, I think it's nine o'clock on Mondays, and they have an all-hands-on-deck thing against this Representative Brackett's Bill 777. And they have ludicrous arguments. And I'll just mention one, just to show you how desperate they're getting. They said that, oh, it's a good thing that a city can charge another municipality a surcharge of 10 or 25 or 50%, because they use that money for parks and other amenities that the other municipality can use. I mean, it's just absurd, the things that they're coming up with. You know, I think, I think it just really comes down to that, you know, fortunately now on electric, we're Florida Power and Light customers. How would any of us feel that if I had my house here and you had your house two blocks down, the only difference was there was a municipal boundary, and I, you got to pay 25% more than me? I mean, it's simple, it's simple equity, and it's just absurd how the Florida League of Cities. But to your point, it's the big ones, OUC, is, you know, they get tons of money from this, so. But I just want to say, thank you for fighting the lonely fight, so.
Right, and I know we all want to get out of here, but particularly galling was the argument that this legislation, which was sponsored by Representative Brackett, who I pointed out was a former mayor of the city of Vero Beach, which has a utility, which argued that any contract that, in its determination, was ill-advised at the time it entered into it, because they are losing money on that class of service, could be ignored, is, is galling. Because the argument the League of Cities is putting forward is that this legislation would interfere with the ability of municipalities to engage in franchise agreements and contracts at arms-length and negotiate fair agreements with other municipalities. And so kind of bad news for Mr. Corpering is, I know you have a bilateral agreement with the city of Vero Beach, which is great, great for JI, I'm glad you have it. However, if at some point down the road, they decide that, we're not getting enough out of this, they can throw your contract out the window. And the courts have basically said, yeah, that's kind of how it is, absent legislative action. So we're making a point of pointing out how bogus that argument is and some of the correspondence, and, you know, we'll continue to do that. I suppose, you know, we'll just have to see how this all shakes out, but it's just doing the right thing, and, you know, we'll. Just remind me, since we can't talk about this in private, and I know you have all these statistics, what percentage of general revenues gets transferred to the general fund by the city?
Six. Six percent.
Six percent, okay.
It was with the water and sewer, excuse me, the electric was, I think total was approaching 20%.
20%. Does this
They fund 20% of the budget from the
And I asked this only in case, you know, it comes up in the context
I'm sorry, just to interrupt you. Then they do these phony cost allocations.
That's what I was going to ask.
So, and, you know, you could argue, but the vice president is correct on the pure reasons.
Right, so in the event this comes up, and should there be a flurry of calls with representatives, you know, asking for our input, the 6% in our instance for the city does not include, you know, the administrative allocations and, you know, that, I'm guessing they're probably above a 10% threshold if you do that, right? So, all right. Okay, enough about that issue. Call to the audience. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to say anything?
Anyone? Anyone?
All right, with that, we are adjourned until next month. Thank you, everyone.